Sorry. All right, good evening. I will call the Provost City Planning Commission hearing for October 23, 2019 to order. It is 6:02 PM. We had five items on the agenda this evening, but item five has been continued, so there'll just be four. The items marked with an asterisk are items that we will, as a body, make recommendations to municipal council for, so we will not make a final decision on those. Those do go to municipal council for a legislative decision. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Howard.
Will you please arise and repeat the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, our first item on the agenda this evening, item one. Oh, so sorry. Yes, we need to do a row call first, sorry. Hurry to get going here. Laurie Urkiaga, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflict.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Shannon Elsworth, no conflicts.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Thank you, commissioners. Now we'll read the first item in. Item one, Kenny Graber requests project plan approval for expansion of the Jamestown Assisted Living Facility located at 3352 North 100 East in the professional office or PO zone. This is in the Riverside neighborhood, and, see, Mr. Larson will present item one.
Brandon Larson, Development Services staff. So, I think all of you were here when I presented this item last time, and so I'm not going to go into any lengthy review of this, but I just, by way of reminder, just going to remind you that perhaps the biggest thing they're doing here is adding a new wing on the south side of the property and relocating a pond. And one point they did make at the, there was a neighborhood meeting held, and I'll get into that in just a minute, but there is a pretty important expansion that's occurring here of the gathering and dining area, and so that's a significant thing, along with a road dedication and a construction and dedication of a portion of Lover's Lane. So, a neighborhood meeting was held on October 15th, I think it was, a productive meeting, good for the neighborhood. They, for the most part, appeared to be very supportive of, they appeared to be supportive of the proposal. They did bring up one or two concerns about parking. It appeared that the applicant essentially agreed to look into a couple of parking issues. For instance, that there was some concern expressed that there's maybe insufficient parking when there's a big event at Jamestown, and so the applicant agreed to look into that issue, as well as some parking for, a parking issue related to employees. But overall, it appeared to be a good meeting, and again, staff would point out that this is an administrative approval process. They've appeared to have met all the requirements, with the exception of a few minor issues that they can deal with staff on. Yeah, parking was an issue there. And so, against, staff would recommend that the planning commission approve this proposal with the condition that they address the few remaining CRC issues.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, I'd like to invite the applicant then, Mr. Graber.
I'm filling in for Kenny today. My name's Paul. I'm his, I'm one of the project managers at Stellar. So, we're just, we're really excited about this project and the value that it's going to add to the community, and we're really excited just to get this ball rolling and comply with anything that we need to do, and, yeah, we're just, we're really excited for this. Do you guys have any additional questions for me or anything?
Commissioners, any questions?
I do. What could you tell me about the Supper Union Canal irrigation ditch? Is that something that's going to have to be covered or enclosed, or what's, what's the problem or the issue?
The canal, from going from the canal, we've worked with the water rights and anything. None of the water rights are going to change the canal. I believe how it is right now is it goes underground into our pond. It's going to go underground into our pond again. Nothing's going to change regarding that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Right, I will open up item one to the public.
Excuse me, I believe the neighborhood chair gets to go before the public.
Sir, I'm about to announce that.
Thank you.
That is part of the public. So, at this time, I'd like to open item one to the public hearing portion, and I would invite the neighborhood chair from the Riverside neighborhood, if he's present.
First of all, I want to thank you for-
Could you please state your name for the record?
I will. I'm getting there, just like you were getting there. I'm now getting there. Before I do that, I want to thank you for the promotion to president from neighborhood chair. Thank you, Brandon. My name is Michael Roan, and per your document, I'm now the president, so thank you very much. My report apparently was not included in the handout that you got or what's at the back of the room, so I will go ahead and make it. We had about 35 people attend our meeting last week, which we arranged within about two days of being notified that this was on your docket, so it had been on the docket a couple of years ago, but due to the time delay, we asked to have it back so we could have the neighborhood meeting. Of the 35 attendees, the vast majority were actually residents in Jamestown. We did have three neighborhood chairs attend, myself, the chair of the Tempe U-North neighborhood, and the Edgemont neighborhood, which is immediately to the east of this property, just up the bluff above the Lover's Lane and Canal area. I believe the canal that you asked about, Mr. Knudsen, is actually the enclosed canal that's buried underneath Lover's Lane, just to the right of the property, and we asked about that in the meeting because there were some concerns, and there have been concerns in the past about the utilization of Lover's Lane to access the property for cleaning and other people. There was a time, two years ago, when the property owners actually hired a pretty rough-looking guy in a trailer to be under the trees on Lover's Lane to discourage people from using Lover's Lane. That was a concern that was brought up in the neighborhood meeting as well. We've asked that they trim the trees back and they maintain Lover's Lane. It sounds like with this comment about Lover's Lane being improved and them doing it, that that will be resolved. There are also issues about property ownership. There are two sisters that own the property and trust. I understand from the owner who was at the neighborhood meeting that they've purchased the property now instead of it being a lease, so that should hopefully resolve that problem. Parking has perpetually been an issue because of the number of employees that park along this street here on both sides. We understand that with the addition of these 23 additional parking stalls and an additional 35 that the owner said would be on this gravelled area immediately south of the construction, that employees will all park off-street, as well as the residents, with the exception of their major events like Mother's Day and Christmas and those sorts of things, and the celebration they have with the antique cars where they celebrate Colonel Halverson's candy bomber thing, and they have a helicopter come over and drop candy. So, that will be a major improvement in the neighborhood. It has affected some of the local businesses with the parking on the street here, like the Magelbees Fresh and some of the other people down here in the bank area and the strip mall south of that. Irrigation water was an issue. In addition to the canal that you talked about here, there is water that comes, here we go, to the pond. They've told us that there's a breezeway right here that they will bring water underground into the pond from that location, and also around behind the property here into the pond. Now, the pond does have an overflow which comes across and down along University Avenue, and then goes under University Avenue to the areas south of Shadow Brook and north of Marcrest, and it goes through, through Brook Tree and Marcrest, and then cuts over into the golf course and goes into their ponds. They said they will maintain that, and that water will continue to flow. That was a neighborhood concern. So, at the end of the meeting, oh, there was also concern about not only the expansion interior for the dining and meeting area, but what would happen with the AV equipment for the church program, and what would happen, they're apparently taking out a couple of rooms adjacent to here to expand and provide common area. One of the concerns had to do with the adequacy of medical staff locations here. We understand that on the second floor, they're adding in this area a medical place that will help provide medical services for the 30 units in this area. We've also asked them to consider putting in a couple of handicap parking stalls here, even though that the total number meets the city requirements. The feeling was that with their handicap stalls here, to come in, go through the entire property and come down if people here need assistance, that that was too far. The property owner said he would consider using a couple of handicap stalls here to make it easier for the residents to come in. So, at the end of the meeting, we did ask for a vote, and every member that was in attendance said they felt comfortable with this expansion, so that's the report from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Roan? All right, thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to item one? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to item one? All right, seeing none, I will ask the applicant if he would like to address any of those concerns that were expressed by the neighborhood chair?
Yes, during the meeting, all the concerns were addressed and taken care of, and there wasn't any concerns leaving the meeting that were outstanding. We had the opportunity, we brought the CEO of the company, the executive director, myself, and members of the public together, just to make sure there was a consensus. The residents at the facility are extremely excited for this project to start. The neighbors came in and congratulated us for being good neighbors, and all questions have been addressed and concerns have been addressed, and we, if there's nothing else, we'd just like to continue with this process.
Great, thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Okay. All right, I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion and/or motion.
Madam Chair, we heard this thing at our last meeting, and I had the privilege of working in the neighborhood for 25 years. The facility has been a well-run facility, and I think the neighborhood and the people, the residents, get along pretty well. Never been an issue of problems. So, with that, unless there are any objections, I would, I would move that we approve the expansion plan for the Jamestown Assisted Living Facility located at 3352 North 100 East in the professional office zone, subject to meeting all the CRC requirements stated in item one.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Do we have a second for Mr. Howard's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Knudsen. All those in favor of approving item one?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, item one is approved, and that was unanimous. Thank you. Okay, item two is legislative in nature. Item two, the Community Development Department requests ordinance text amendments to sections 15.20, 14.10.120, and 14.06.030 illustrations to clarify development landscaping requirements and to allow for xeriscap. This has citywide impact, and Mr. Weaver will present item two.
Thank you. As staff has worked with various individuals, it got brought up to the concern that there's need for improvement in our landscaping text, primarily discussing xeriscaping and synthetic turf, astroturf, to be allowed within Provo City, as well as adding further clarifications to help city staff and residents and developers as we look at our landscaping text. This is, we've looked at this previously in past meetings and work session. I'm happy to go through the text on a more detailed level. However, primarily, additional definitions were added to the text. We have a section, and I can go through some of these definitions for artificial turf grass was added, clarification on hardscape, ground cover, additional text of impervious landscape area, ornamental grass, permeable, softscape, turf grass, xeric landscaping was added. Xeriscaping is a trademark term, and so we were not allowed to use that in our definitions, but xeric landscaping suffices, and adding the addition, the definition of zero landscaping. Additionally, adding in, on the design standards, I'm talking about how much a yard may be impervious for the front yard and combined side yards. Sections of text discussing xeric landscaping. So, if someone was to come in and want to do some xeric landscaping, we could have some framework to give them on what we would require as the city code. I'll draw your attention to A, which is below number six. That number of 35% was drafted between conversation of our sustainability committee and working with our Parks and Recs Department to come up with that number. That would be, that would suffice to have amount of plant coverage on landscapes and areas of the yard. Additionally, staff worked with our zoning administrator as we talked about the installation and maintenance section of plant materials to help enforce, help enforcement as they do go out on different cases, as well as helping the public to know what is required of them as a homeowner. And additionally, looking at our supplemental landscaping requirements by zone, I went through this section of code 1520, and with the change in our additional department and new department name corrected some of the things formerly known as community development to development services or community and neighborhood services departments, for that clarification. And this section of code just sort of aligns with 1520, so we have cohesiveness with it. Adding, these are the illustrations, I'll go on 1506030. My apologies on that up there. Just add a clarification for what constitute as a front yard. These were drawn based on the definitions in 1406 for front yard, side yard, and rear yard, for various types of placements of the home based on the street. And just for some pictures, this is what we don't want in our maintenance section. We don't want trees to be hanging too low on the sidewalk, so you can't walk underneath them, or plant shrubs over the sidewalk. At least, I don't want that. So, but we do want, or these are some examples within Provo City for xeric landscaping here, and one more, the picture showing positive examples of xeric landscaping that we have within the city. Are there any questions for staff? And additionally, there were no comments from the public raised to me at all, so.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
The major benefit of this proposal is to clarify the language and prevent ambiguities among definitions.
Correct. Any other questions, commissioners? Mr. Knudsen?
It seems like in some cities, they, we said something about 50% of the yard can be the xeric landscape or the natural kind of look. It seems like in some cities, they say it has to be the front yard or the backyard. We're just saying that in total, they can have up to 50% on the property, right?
We're saying that a minimum of 35% has to be plant coverage on the properties for each yard, your front yard, your side yard, your rear yard.
Can you go back a slide? Does that look like 50%?
35% is what needs to have plant coverage, 35.
Oh, 35.
At three years' plant maturity.
Okay.
That's what it's saying. And just because someone's going to do xeric landscaping, the code as written currently says you need to provide irrigation to the plants. You cannot just plant it, expect natural rainfall to be the only water source. You need to provide.
Gotcha. Do you think this is 35%?
There's more yard to this than, yeah, this is just half a yard.
Gotcha. Are these pictures included, will they be included in our ordinance? Or is this just examples?
Just examples.
Okay. Sounds good.
Any other questions, commissioners? Mr. Knudsen?
On the section 15.20.150, the enforcement, it says a bonding for an allscape improvement, landscape improvement shall be held until required landscaping is inspected. How much are we going to charge on the bond?
So, this comes from the project plan applications.
Because it might be cheaper for him not to ever do it, to let the bond go ahead and-
So, sometimes project plan applications, you have to, landscaping requirements are part of that project, and if the landscaping isn't going to get done because the winter season's coming, we can do a bond for that, and so then the money's set aside, so if they don't do it, we have the money that the landscaping can be installed.
Is there a technical bond?
I believe so. So, it should be $1.50 a foot?
Is what we bonded for.
Is what it's bonded for him.
Any other questions, commissioners? All right, thank you. Well, I'll open this up to any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to item two. Or any, any members of the community? Please state your name for the record.
Hey, I'm Spencer Nelson. I just had a couple of quick questions. So, in section 1520070, xeriscaping shall not be permitted, xeric landscaping is permitted. I assume that this is just an extension of the 35% vegetation rule?
So, zero landscaping, rather than the definition, you can see here it says means sterile area, primarily with dirt or no living plants. We don't want that. Sometimes people have a hard time deciphering between xeric landscaping and zero landscaping. And so, we encourage the xeric landscaping, but we don't want just a dead, sterile yard.
Got it, yeah. And, shoot, I think in 1520060, there's another amended section that says no more than 50% of each front, rear, and combined side yards may be impervious. Seems like, maybe like a high number. I, maybe I don't have any perspective on landscaping, but, I mean, if you're interested in, you know, beautification efforts and not allowing xeriscaping but allowing xeric landscaping, 50% seems like it might just kind of allow the opportunity for what is supposed to be the goals for landscaping to kind of just be disregarded by just putting impermeable surfaces everywhere.
This number was derived based on, you could currently, as code states, you can pave one of your side yards already, so then the other side yard would have to be permeable, and that's where that number came from.
Okay, that's the only questions I had. Thank you, commissioner.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jacob Torres. Have there been any estimates on how much water the city would save by changing this ordinance?
There have not been any estimates on that. City code already did emphasize, encourage water-wise landscaping. This is just giving framework for, and, I mean, again, the property owner would reap the benefit of not using as much water for their property bill, utility bill.
Okay, that was just my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I will turn it back over to commissioners for further discussion and motion.
I'm happy to make a motion, unless there's-
Ms. Elsworth?
I move that we forward a positive recommendation to the city council on item two, where the Community Development Department is requesting an ordinance text amendment to sections 15.2, 14.10.120, and 14.06.030 to clarify development landscaping requirements and to allow for xeric landscaping.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. Elsworth's motion? Seconded by Ms. Urkiaga, so sorry, Urkiaga. All right, all those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council on item two?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous. We'll forward a positive recommendation for item two to municipal council. Okay, item three is also legislative. The Provost City Department of Development Services requests an ordinance amendment to sections 14.06.020, 14.08.020, 14.24- 14.08.020, 14.24.020, 1427A.020, 1428.020, and 1429.020 to add a definition for cannabis production establishment to allow it as a permitted use in the A110 agricultural and the FI freeway industrial zones and to list that use as not permitted in all other agricultural and industrial zones. This has citywide application, and Mr. Larson will present item three.
Brandon Larson, Community Development, or Development Services Staff, still trying to get used to that. So I think it's well-known that the state of Utah's been, had a lot of discussions and been engaged in some legislative activity relative to medical cannabis. And they, in 2018, the end of that year, adopted House Bill 3001. And that paved the way for some medical cannabis. There were some modifications to that bill and to the code that came about from that legislative act. And that actually just occurred just about a month ago. Some new laws basically went into effect. And so we're trying to basically work with some of the new legislation that we've received. There is a definition, the state has a definition for cannabis production establishment. And that's really what we're talking about here today, cannabis production establishment. We're not going to get into dispensaries or pharmacies or the distribution of medical cannabis tonight. So there's the, basically what this proposal includes is a definition for cannabis production establishment. It's the same definition from 441A, 406 of the state code. And the key here is, there's three things here. A cannabis production establishment can either be a cannabis cultivation facility, so cultivation of cannabis, cannabis production facility, so processing of cannabis, or an independent cannabis testing laboratory, or a laboratory or analysis of the cannabis. And so we're proposing that the city adopt essentially the same definition as per the state code. And then, again, as was noted in the introduction, we're proposing that, staff's proposing that the city consider allowing the processing of, or allow for cannabis processing establishments in two zones. The A110 zone and the agricultural zone and the freeway industrial zone. I will note, the state code, the biggest reason, the impetus for this is that 441A, 406 of the state code says that we have to allow for at least one agricultural zone and one industrial zone. We have to allow, we have to have, of each one of those zones has to allow for cannabis production establishments. And so that's what we're proposing tonight, is to allow one zone. If we don't establish a zone, or if the city were, desires a couple of zones, then it'd basically be, it would be allowed in any agricultural or any industrial zone.
All the agricultural zones.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. And that's 50% of the land in the city. So we thought, what we're proposing is the city takes a more measured approach to this use. Let's start with it in one industrial zone and one agricultural zone. And then as, and then allow applicants to come in and if they want to propose that use in another zone, then they can make application and bring that to the city for consideration. And so you can see the language here, I won't dive in into it, it's pretty simple. We're just basically here allowing for the use of cannabis production establishments in the A1 zone. It would be excluded in the CM zone. The MP zone would be excluded as well. M1 zone permitted in the FI, in the freeway industrial zone. It's interesting to note, I think all of these zones already allow for drugs. Like, for instance, the production, the manufacturing of analgesics. Yes, like a painkiller. And, or the, you know, production of, you know, codeine, things like that. So either permitted or conditional. We're just being, what this proposal is doing is being specific to exclude or include cannabis production. So in the FI zone, it is included, permitted. M2 zone, not permitted. The PIC zone, not permitted. Staff thinks this is a good approach. Starting out with one agricultural zone and one industrial zone. That opens up 480 acres of Provo City land for these types of operations. And so we, staff would recommend, that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of this proposal. As per the findings in the staff report.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, questions?
I'm wondering if staff has developed a map that shows the specific zones where this would be permitted?
You know what, I am sorry, I did not, but I can tell you where it's at. I should have had a map for you, and I apologize.
Well, I'm thinking that the public would also appreciate having a map.
Thank you. Let me dial this in for you. So if you can think of the industrials, the airport, the A110 zone is essentially right there. It's just north and east of the airport. The A110 zone is pretty much exclusively, except for five acres over in the Slate Canyon area. It's essentially right there by the airport. That's where the majority of the land where this type of operation could occur. So, let me see if I can give you, so the A110 zone lies right in this area. Right in this, there's several hundred acres of A110, right just to the north and east of. Yep, there you go. So you can see A110. And then, I don't know if it's too noteworthy, but over along the bench, over by Slate Canyon, there is five acres. It's a, yeah, just a small little piece of A110. The freeway industrial zone is actually right here. You can see that as it runs along the, it runs along I-15. And that's the only spot of freeway industrial in the city. So really, it's two main areas in the city where this type of use would be allowed, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Howard?
These are mostly indoor facilities, I would take it.
Yes, that's, it would seem, considering the climate we have here, that it would typically be indoor. But again, as I think I noted in the study session, there are provisions in the state code for outdoor facilities. In fact, there are screening requirements for cultivation facilities. If you're going to have a cultivation facility, it has to be screened from the road. So you can't see the plants from the road.
Any other questions for staff?
I would like, is it just the, what is the next zone down from A110? Is there an A15 or an A11?
Yeah, both of those.
Why would you, I have ground, I have eight acres of ground close to the A110, but you would not allow me to grow it because I only have eight acres instead of 10 acres.
Yeah, so are you A1, are you eight acres in the A110 zone or eight acres in the A15?
A15.
Yes, so if we had put it in the A15, it just would have opened up a lot more acreage. And as Mr. Larson said, we were trying to take a more measured approach. Anyone who would like to add this use in another zone, would go through the text amendment process with the planning commission and city council to add something to that. This is simply what staff thought would be a good idea, a good starting point for this new legislation. There's a lot more acres in the A15 than in the A110, and that's why we chose one over the other. But you are correct, that distinction would create a problem for somebody in the A15 zone.
Mr. Howard?
I just wondered, is there any kind of clamor for this kind of business here in Provo? I mean, there's economies of scale.
Right.
And I wouldn't think that Provo, Utah would be a primary spot unless it's for marketing reasons.
You know, specific to cannabis, I've had one inquiry in the last two weeks, but we have, you know, I've been with the city for a month, and I've answered at least a couple of questions on medical cannabis, and other staff members may have as well. So it's, in the last month, I think there has been some interest shown from the public. Particularly, and that may also be coming from the fact that the legislation was just recently went into effect on this issue. So there was some updated language.
That's on the sales and distribution side or in the production side?
Production side.
Really?
Yeah. This section of the state code that I keep referencing became effective a month ago today.
Interesting.
We've had several calls, nobody, to my knowledge, with a specific parcel asking, can I do it on that piece? Just more general questions of, where will it be allowed, or what are your rules on this?
Any other questions, comments? I'm just grateful you're being proactive about it and, you know, actually making a distinction where you think it would be appropriate, instead of not doing anything. And then, you know, it opens things up even more than we might like, so. All right, are there any neighborhood chairs who would like to address item three? Any members of the public who would like to speak to item three? All right, seeing none, I will turn it back over to commissioners for further discussion and/or motion.
Clearly BYU students out there.
Anxious to see this pass, right?
I think it's a good place to start. I mean, not knowing, I think there are a lot of unknowns. I think all the counties are dealing with the unknowns of this whole issue. We have a process for expanding or contracting it as the public desires and as their merits are brought forth. So we really don't have a basis for empirical data. And so I think it's probably the right thing to do.
Ms. Urkiaga?
Yeah, I appreciate staff taking this approach and finding sort of a balanced starting place. So that is helpful.
Comments, questions? Motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the Provo City Council that we amend the sections 14.06.020, and 14.29.020 to add a definition for cannabis production establishment and to allow it as a permitted use in the A1.10 agricultural and the FI freeway industrial zone as presented in item three.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Do we have a second for Mr. Howard's motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Knutson. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation of item three to municipal council?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that was unanimous. We'll forward a positive recommendation on item three. And the last item on our agenda for this evening, item four. Provo City Public Works Department requests amendments to section 15.03.020 (3), to update 2019 standards to 2020 standards. This has citywide impact. And Mr. Wright? Mr. Day will present item four.
Thank you. My name is David Day, I'm with the Public Works Department. And by way of introduction, every year we keep track of questions or clarity to our specs and standards that people ask. And then we make revisions to try to make it clearer. And then we put those in each year's update and then bring them to you to look at. So the slide that's currently up is just the ordinance changes. So in, underlined red is the new text, and crossed out blue is removal of old text. So I don't know how detailed you want me to get into each one of these, there's like 45 of these sheets. So I'll move through them really quick, and if you have a question, please stop and ask. Ask me what questions you might have. The next sheet is just simply adding this blue area. It's a chart that shows the ability for asphalt contractor to supplement different types of oils into their mixes, so. This drawing in the blue is the new updates. It's just trying to add additional clarity to how far down from the pipe to the bottom of the box to install a water quality device. Most of them are a snout, that's a brand name, the snout is a brand name. But that's what most people install because it's so cheap. And then the rest of these drawings are all the same through this series, so I'll just kind of go through them quick here. So all of those were the same. This is somewhat new. We had type one, which is at the top before, and we added type two. So everything looks blue because it was moved around. So we just gave more options to give people the ability to kind of see what we're looking for a little clearer. We have the type one lot, which is pretty standard, and then the type two, which offers the water to be detained in the backyard. So there's 100 other ways to do that, too. This is just giving people a starting point to help them. So here's the notes that go along with the drawings. This is kind of hard to see because I'd have to rotate it. But this is just giving them the idea of, they have to have their their main floor above the street level. We've had some pretty major storms in the past that if the street floods a little bit and their house isn't above the street, then we get water in the home and then we pay damages. So we're just trying to protect them and the city from damage from stormwater, so that's what that's all about. This is just adding additional clarity. The areas in blue are just showing questions that have been asked, so we added more. I've wondered, at some point, when our drawing gets to the point where it's all text, I wonder if, is it a drawing anymore or just text? So some of these are getting pretty bad that way, but if the drawing is worth a thousand words or picture is worth a thousand words, then I guess there's still more picture than words. Just the text associated with that drawing, and then another drawing showing elevation from the flow line of curb and gutter to a high point in the driveway. Or if they don't have that, then they provide a a collection device to protect them. This one is really a small change. If you look at the top, it has just the the flow of the sewer being turned on a radius instead of just coming straight in. That was a pretty small change, but. Clarity to the 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 drawing here, just adding more text. The drawing didn't change. The the notes that go with those changes. This is our our water meter that's most widely used, the three quarter to one inch meter, just showing where that goes in the planter area. We've worked with our power department and identified that one of the changes we do this year is putting that water meter to the to the front edge of the meter, a foot away from the back of curb. That's so that the power can go in the other area closer to the sidewalk. So if you remember, our planter is seven feet wide, so that foot gives us a foot from the curb. Then our meter's about two feet, so we take up about three feet of the planter. And then the power and communications go in the leftover four feet there.
Madam Chair, these are highly technical, and I assume that they've gone through all the engineering review. And I think, to me, that that's probably the most important thing, because I'm taking your word for it. These are sound. Could you just tell us how, what happened before they got to our eyes? What kind of review process did you do?
We've had, we've had one round of reviews through our CRC process, and as far as I'm aware, there's no comments been made.
And and these are with qualified engineers of the Public Works Department?
Yeah, so we had Public Works look at it, Development Services, Parks and Rec, Power, and Fire.
Again, these are so highly technical that the only ones who'd really have probably meaningful input would be Power, Public Works.
Yeah, so I I can go through these a lot faster.
I would say, let's, I would say we don't need to go through them. I would say, planning commission, if you have any questions about any specific pages, go ahead and ask. But they were given all this material previously, David.
This one may be of interest to you. We we had our our cross-section changes last year that we went through quite a lengthy process of trying to get that just right. This is merely putting those dimensions on these intersection designs. So the only thing that you can see, if you look really close, is the changes is the width of the roads. So that's all the updates for that. This one may be of interest. We're showing the utility companies where to put their power and gas. So that's just the layout of what utilities go in the street. This is a brand-new one. As you drive around Provo, you'll notice communication lines hanging below the power lines. What what's been happening is those communication lines are blocking people's ability to see the red or green or yellow balls. And so we've had to come up with this detail that says you can't put any of those communication lines that block or obscure vision to these signal heads. And and that way we have something that says, hey, there's, this is our standard. You can't do that. You should be able to, if you're driving around the city, be able to see that and and know that 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 could be a safety issue. Rest of these are all technical. I won't worry you with those. The that there are design standards that go in our guidelines that we have had in the past. That's all all text. If you have any questions, I can address those.
Mr. Day, so in the cases of the blocked signals, does, do the owners need to go back and retrofit to meet this standard now?
We we have been actively contacting the owners of the communication line and say, you need to figure out a way to get your lines out from in front of the signal heads. And this will, this will help us with that because we have, we'll have a a definite standard that says this is our standard that's been passed by our city council, so. I don't know if you can kind of think, if you can't see whether it's red or green, that's a safety issue, so.
Definitely. So this is a process you go through every year, and as you receive feedback, you know, good things, bad things, you can then make those adjustments for the following year?
Yeah, and we add them. We add them to these specs. We update. This is the only brand-new one that we have this year. The rest of them were just tweaks to the old ones.
That's great, that it's being continually updated and data collected and applied to the next year, yeah.
We we take input from contractors, the public, our own internal staff, and and the effort is to try to make it clearer and better.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Day? All right, thank you. Any neighborhood chairs who would like to address item four? Any members of the public who would like to address item four? All right, seeing none. Commissioners, I'll turn it back over to you. Mr. Howard?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
Unless there's a discussion here.
I'd like to recommend to the Provo City Council that the amendments to section fifteen point oh three point oh two paren three to update the 2019 standards to 2020 standards of this document in item four.
Okay, that was a motion to forward a positive recommendation to municipal council. Great. Do we have a second for Mr. Howard's motion? Seconded by Ms. Urkiaga. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation on item four to municipal council?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, also unanimous, so item four, we will follow, we will forward a positive recommendation. Do we have motion to adjourn? Ms. Ellsworth?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. So we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, Mr. Day.
I think that's a good rule. That's a really good rule.
The baseball game is tied two to do at the top of the third.
If we finish before it's dark outside, it's like a miracle.